Is everybody ready? Right. It being five thirty-one, I will bring the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. We get a roll call, please.
Ms. Proper, Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Gara.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here.
Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Okay. Does anybody have any commissioners have a change to the minutes from last meeting? Nope, I'll go now stand as they are. Any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes tonight.
Okay. And we will. I'm going to open the meeting now to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. And with that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself.
No hands raised.
No hands. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on historic preservation issues? Seeing no one, I will close that part of the meeting and move on to final hearing. The BGV parcel six re subdivision plat Timber Trail Road, PL twenty twenty-five dash zero one four eight. And Sarah?
All right. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Sarah Crump, Senior Planner for the record. You'll please bear with me. I don't have my screen tonight, so I'm going up there. There were some technical difficulties, so if I'm fumbling, that's why. We'll blame it on that. So tonight for you, the subdivision of parcel six, formerly known as parcel six, the Valor Heritage subdivision is the proposed name. You had the preliminary hearing for the subdivision back in July, I believe on July fifteenth. Amelia led that, and so I'm taking over the project from her. But this is a proposal to subdivide parcel six into fourteen single-family lots and extend Timber Trail Road from its current terminus through the neighborhood and also construct a couple of private drives. And then establish some easements for private trails as well as utilities. At the former preliminary hearing, the planning commission, you identified the size of the disturbance envelopes to be the item that was not compliant with the subdivision code. Other items were found to be compliant, including the landscaping proposal for the project. So tonight I'll mostly be talking about the changes to the disturbance envelopes and those proposed revisions. The correct page here. Previously, this disturbance envelopes were identified to be too large. They were covering the majority of some of the lots. This would have allowed for sprawling programming and not a preservation of the natural site features that we typically want to see with the proposed subdivision. So the applicant spent a lot of time and worked with staff to revise the shape, location, and size of every single envelope was changed in some way. You'll notice the the lot shapes are the same and those are continue to be meet the requirement of point six acres each in size or larger. But what did change was the envelope shape. I kind of can toggle back and forth here. I think I have the previous proposal. So you can see what it was originally. Sorry, I'm struggling to find where that was. Ah. So yeah, so this was what you saw back in July. You can see some of these envelopes take up the majority of the the lot size, except, you know, retracted for the required setbacks. And so the changes. Too much on one screen. Can cover some of the most significant ones. I think lot seven stands out the most. This was previously kind of allowed to be up in this curve of the right of way. Now they pulled that back in order to just preserve a majority of the lot. The applicant provided information from the Timber Trail filings, one and two as kind of support for the sizes that they've revised the envelopes to be. In Timber Trail filings, one and two, the majority of the lots are between thirty-two, I believe, and forty-nine percent coverage of the lot. And so we recognize that as a as a good metric for this neighborhood, considering the size of homes, the topography, and the desired programming that will probably be recommended for these lots. And so what we have here is block coverage between thirty-two and thirty-nine percent in the revised version. Some of the other lots, this lot nine, for example, was previously the envelope kind of went right up directly to the access easement. They pulled that back to allow for more distance between the home and the private drive. Staff really finds that the revisions that they've made address the issues that you had previously and think that the smaller envelope shapes will just provide for additional buffering and separation between the fairly large homes that will eventually be constructed here. But that even with the waivers granted in the development agreement for the size, width, and shape of disturbance envelopes, what we have proposed now does meet the intent of the development code and the subdivision code to limit the location of future disturbance on the site. So staff recommends that or believes that they have achieved the what the commission asked for as far as revisions to the disturbance envelopes. Also want to look at just mentioned one additional revision. The easement tier for skier access, this location and size and function has not changed. And this is the skier access for Timber Trail Road. Previously, the applicant had proposed a skier access bridge to cross the road here. After further discussions with the adjacent HOA, the HOA didn't want that skier bridge. They prefer not to have it. So there will be an at-grade crossing here for skiers. But the easement functionality will remain and they'll be able to cross the extension of Timber Trail Road. So this project is pursuant to the development agreement that was passed in April of twenty twenty-four through the town council, and it complies with the master plan for the area, the Peak Seven and Eight Master Plan, which you approved an amendment to back in August of twenty twenty-four as well. Staff finds that with these revisions, it does meet the development code and the subdivision code. And we recommend that you approve this on final hearing tonight. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have about the provisions or changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions?
Thanks. Nice job, Sarah. I will each of the applications for each of the lots come to us, or if that's only if they?
Unless they are receiving negative points that are not defined in the development code as like, if it's something like landscaping, which those points are being taken away, but a subjective coin analysis that you may see an application, but otherwise they would be D majors and staff level approval.
In the development agreement, what you and per what you described in terms of the building envelopes of all permit structures and construction has to be within the envelope. What about except for where the, as indicated on the plan, the driveways come to the building envelope? Can driveways be outside the building envelope? They need more driveway?
Driveways can cross the envelope once, so they could be outside the envelope. They will be outside of the envelope to enter. Once you cross the envelope, you can't extend. You couldn't do like an S curve or something.
Driveway outside.
Right. We do have fairly high precedent for allowing some like a bump out in your driveway if you need a parking space or something like an extension like that. But driveways can cross the envelope once. Otherwise, they need to be inside the disturbance area. Take pull up. There's a
Yeah, so.
A page of maybe suggested driveway locations. But those are subject to change.
Okay. All right. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Alan. Elaine, questions?
I just have a question about the easement for, I guess, hikers or walkers or skiers at the at the north end. Seems like it, like right below where it says lot nineteen. It looks pretty narrow there. Is that a pinch point for people going through there, or are they going on across lot nineteen? At the very top, just scroll up.
You mean lot fourteen?
It's above lot number one, but it's yeah, lot between lot fourteen and lot one. It makes that sharp turn.
This part here?
Yeah.
So it's a ten-foot wide trail easement. So it should be sufficient for pedestrians or bikers or skiers?
You don't like those short turns, yeah.
But it doesn't look ten feet because it's ten foot wide on the upper left part, right? And then down the bottom, it's not.
You mean he?
Yeah.
It's five feet on each side of this, five feet on either side of lot one and fourteen?
Okay, yes, it's not that segment that I'm concerned about. It's you see where like if you go straight up, it says lot nineteen? Go straight down below there. How wide is that?
Maybe seven or eight feet. I'm not sure.
Okay, so it's not ten. Okay. Concerned about that.
I I think this is an existing easement, so they're not proposing to change the size.
Okay. Maybe it goes on the neighborhood neighboring lot two.
Yeah, we we could maybe have the applicant clarify that, but I think it may go on on the nineteen as well.
All right, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Matt, questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks.
So with respect to the skier bridge, does the town have any concern about the loss of that potential amenity, or is it really up to the adjacent HOAs?
I'd say it's up to the HOAs. The town also wouldn't want to be responsible for maintaining that if and we had a provision in there that we would overtake it if isn't never, didn't keep it up or something, so it would be a burden if it were not maintained to the town. I don't think the town has any qualms with it not being added.
Because it's, I mean, in theory, I guess you could ski down, pass it, take your skis off, cross four o'clock run road and get on the four o'clock run. But that's that's something I I think the majority of people are not going to do. They just stay on four o'clock run or take another way down to that area. But if you were to compare it against like the skiway, skyway, or something when there's a huge benefit to the town and a lot of downstream traffic, then I think if that were the case, we'd be you know, pretty steadfast that there needs to be a bridge. But since this is really an easement that it just benefits the existing Timber Trail neighborhood and they weighed in, I think will support, you know, the recommendation from that neighborhood.
Okay. That helps my understanding. Thanks. No further questions? Thanks, Mike. Mark, questions for Sarah?
I have no questions for Sarah.
And neither do I. Thank you, Sarah. Graham?
Graham Frank from BGV. Thank you. I didn't have to write down many questions tonight. To the sole question, Elaine, that you had, that easement is on both sides of the property line. So you pick up more than ten feet as you're on both sides. I think the only items of note, we tried to take all of you guys' comments from the last meeting, whether it be lot size, lot shape, optimizing the building envelopes within the lot. Mike, to your comment on the healthy stance of trees, we evaluated that. We looked at where, you know, we thought critical areas were up there that we could preserve with the lot, the disturbance envelopes. So we tried to take all of that into account. As always, Chris, Sarah, Mark have been hugely helpful and Shannon in this case because there's a labyrinth of easements, utility lines, communication lines, all going through the site. So I think we got all of that addressed and got some pretty good congruency with the Timber Trail neighborhood next door. So as you guys talked about, you know, the congruency of setbacks, hillsides. All of those things I think have now gone into the plan, and I think we feel like we are in a good spot, a good spot that represents what's been approved to date at other places nearby, and then what provides valuable building envelopes for these potential buyers. So thank you for the help and thank you for the feedback.
Thank you, Graham. Any questions for Graham?
I don't have any. Thank you, Graham.
Questions? No questions. I have no questions either. Thank you, Graham. We will open this up to public hearing, to public comment. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself. Any public question to comment?
I don't see any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Any members of the audience wish to comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment and move to Commissioner comments. Mark, do you have any comments?
No, the only comment that came to mind after hearing that the bridge was not going to be done. Ultimately, that's probably going to make a more seamless community up there where there really isn't going to be any differentiation between the existing Timber Trail community and the new community. So it's probably best.
Yeah, thank you.
No other comment?
Mike, any comments?
I thank the applicant Graham for refining and reducing the size of the development or the building envelope.
Yeah, I just wanted, I guess, I don't know if it's a comment or a question, but the public comment that was emailed to us, to the staff or to us, has that been addressed by a plat note or anything?
Through the development code, we can't require the applicant to provide such an easement. If the applicant and the commenter had a private agreement that they reached that that's something they could do separately from this process, but we can't require that type of easement.
Okay.
Is that something that there would be a future agreement potentially between the two HOAs?
I suppose they could arrange to have that easement, and then it would be a recorded document if the HOAs both agreed to something like that. But they already have access easements between the the two Timber Trail and Valor Heritage, so I don't see the necessity really for for something like that, but
As long as as long as they're maintained, you know, easements and, you know, understood by the property owners, that should work out then.
Right.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you. Alan, any comments?
Just about, I think you guys probably guessed what where I was headed. I saw that for most of the lots, you tried to optimize having the driveway access up top at the higher point of the lots to avoid the applicant, the homeowners, future homeowners coming in with, you know, several hundred feet of retaining walls and and now with the restrictions on the building envelope, they probably wouldn't be able to do it. So I guess I know that some of the lots where it's lower, you know, just something to consider if the driveway access could be pushed further up the road. I don't know if that's possible in a couple of those lots. But I guess those homeowners will just have to realize that they're going to have to have a an elevator from their garage in the basement. But that's all I have. It's the only comment.
Thanks, Alan. My own comment is to echo Mike and say thank you for working on those building envelopes. And that's all I have. So thank you, gentlemen. Please, and if that, can I have a motion to approve or not? Mister Chair, I recommend that this, let's see, the app that we find the application meets the requirements of the development agreement and subdivision standards of the development code and recommend that the commission approve the subdivision application for Valor Heritage subdivision, PL twenty twenty-five dash zero one four eight with the the attached findings and conditions.
A second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Gort.
Yes.
Ms. Proper. Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Gara.
Yes.
Mr. Lees.
Yes.
Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
Mr. Geller.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all. You see it? And with that, we'll move on to Mark and then council summary.
Might be a while till we see the BGV gang again.
Yeah. Hope you the same. Have we approved everything?
We'll come back for something. Goodbye. See you later. Thank you, guys.
See you, guys. You guys.
Thanks. Just one little update. We have with Amelia gone, we went through a recruitment process and what we're going to end up doing is we've offered the job and it's been accepted by Caleb Schwartz, who was our intern this summer. Planner position. So some of you had some contact with him. He came to some of the meetings, I think, and was mainly working on the Dark Sky Initiative, but he got involved in some other things here as well. And he really, I think he's going to be a great fit for the organization. The only downside is he's still in college. And so he finishes up in December, so we're leaving a seat open for him and an office open for him when he gets in here and hopefully right the first of January.
Imagine how envious his classmates are.
Yeah. I certainly didn't have one before I got out of school. So anyway, yeah, that's great for us, I think, and it'd be great for Caleb as well. Town Council last week, the big item was a, they had their, they had a discussion about the budget for the Capital Improvements Plan, the CIP, and it's the next five years of improvements. And there was there's a discussion about just that over time, if you look at the five years, that we're not in as good of financial position after five years with all the investments we're making in any number of projects, you know? The housing obviously is a big ticket item, and there's a lot of other things that contribute to them as well. I don't have the list with me. I apologize. But anyway, so they were being conscientious about that, pushing some things out a few years, pushing them up beyond the five-year period. Like, for example, the second phase of runway and some other things like that. But we're still in strong financial position as an organization. But they're definitely in a little more conservative mode in terms of how they're approaching their budget these days. So anyway, next, their neck, well, not next meeting, but in in October, October fourteenth, they'll have their actual budget retreat where they'll go through all the operations budget for the for the town. So that's going to be like a noon to seven meeting. So it'd be pretty lot of discussion regarding the main budget for everything. So anyway, they got a presentation from THK, who was our consultant on the McCain Plan Project. So that's for the open space portion, the like fifteen acres on the south end of McCain. And anyway, THK, our consultant, along with their subconsultants, it helped out, came up with some ideas for you know, trails, public spaces and things like that to you know, kind of, you know, make that area a little better than it is right now. It's just pretty barren. You know, so obviously there's some landscaping, things at that like that that are part of it. But anyway, the BOSAC was very positive about those plans and so was the council. So now it's going to go through kind of a last round of discussions. They will be coming to present to you, to show you the plans. It doesn't need any technical planning approval, but just as a courtesy type thing to bring it to you. And so anyway, that that will be, I believe, the first meeting in November. That we'll have THK presenting to Planning Commission and then subsequent to that, they'll go to council for a final blessing on this, but everyone likes the idea. There's discussions about level of improvements and the overall goal is to keep it to low-impact passive recreational uses as much as we can, soft surface trails instead of a lot of hard surface and that. There's a couple of issues still to be ironed out. One is the rec path and its final alignment coming south from Vista Verde two and how it ties in with this whole plan. So that's still to come, but it was a really everyone seems pretty happy with the results. And yeah, so they did a fair amount of outreach, tried to reach out to the Vista Verde residents and then several times or went out to Vista Verde and had like barbecues and stuff like that to get folks involved. Got some participation, not a ton, but you know, that was a goal is to reach to some of those communities that are typically underrepresented in these type of processes. So.
Question of that, the two lots that are on the east side that are designated for public works and landscaper storage? Or is there any criteria for how they use that, or could it look like it looks now long term?
For public works?
Yeah, for public works and landscapers that have leases there.
Yeah, there's not a lot there guiding that right now, so.
Like, like now, there's a forty-foot-high mound of dirt.
Yeah, I think Public Works has some goals to, you know, disperse that a little bit more. But we haven't had a lot of discussions with them about that in terms of how they're going to do that. But um we haven't had long, a lot of discussions with them about that in terms of how they're going to do that. You know, and some of those things are they're just kind of hide, hard to hide some of the.
I know a lot of the comments from town council for other projects in town that are further south. They say this is the first thing they see when they come in, but actually those two lots are some of the first things that you see coming in and they're not very attractive.
Yeah, although there is that buffer out on the highway, which helps, so. Yeah, yeah.
Out of forty foot mound of dirt, though.
Yeah, no, you still see.
The stuff somewhere.
I know, but I I'm just saying it's just kind of ironic when they talk about Gold Rush Lot being the first thing you see. It's as far from the first thing you see.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, it's inevitable. All this stuff ended up out on McCain for the most part. There's still some pro- some on Stillson. Um but you know, with um block eleven being fully developed or will be with runway, it's got to move.
Yeah.
And so that's where it's gonna end up, so there's not many, much land left, so.
I think I think for April Fools' this day this year, we'll have a work session on what is the gate official gateway to town. I think we could create a map in GIS and I know of at least probably eighteen different locations.
Street Station will be the south entrance, uh the north entrance to town.
But at one time or another, a public meeting, it's been identified as the gateway to town, so.
Remember Dave Pringle would used to say, uh um the he in his mind, the gateway was when you came right by Four Mile Bridge and you turned and you first see the ski area. And to him, that was it because you know you're in Breckenridge.
Town jurisdiction.
You know, so.
Alright, there we have the uh the gas thing.
Okay, um so moving on from that, like I said, um you you guys will get to see that plan here in another few weeks. Chris uh uh Chris took his neighborhood preservation policy for a second reading and uh they adopted that. So it it's officially will be law shortly here. Um just a real recap, um reduced charging. Uh EV charging points. And then increased kind of setbacks going to the um absolute setbacks and then finally eliminating the landscaping points, so. Anyway, Chris did a great job on that and now he's kind of starting to embark on phase two, which is going to be taking a look at. Mass and um bulk plane potentially regulations. As well as um structure hardening and some other things in terms of positive point opportunities, so. So. And I believe Mike's uh on a little subcommittee to help with that.
Yeah, I ju- I just sent out the end like a doodle poll today to see if we could get going next week, so. Yeah, Mike, um Mickey Florio, a local architect, Tim Gurkin. And um Andy Stabile, I think, or that'd be the the three. And Andy's actually on planning commission for Frisco and has some experience of bulk pla- plane. I'm sure he's still on, but he he had, I think he was on when they adopted bulk plane, so he has some experience um pertaining to that.
He designed the Soul Center. Among other things, yeah.
Then on a first reading, uh council was all on board with the IECC code amendments, uh energy code related. So that one's on cruise control, I think, at this point and will be adopted next week at second reading. Then they will follow up with all the other ICC codes that need to be adopted on the typical six year cycle. So um they'll be adopting those and they all take effect in January. So that's that, um and that's primarily the discussions at the meeting. And I wanted to go over with you with, um next week I'm going to talk with the town council. Chris and I are gonna. A little bit about comprehensive plan for the town and we're going to do an update to it.
Really?
Yeah, it was last done in two thousand eight. And uh Chris and I both worked on that and um anyway, um. Yeah, we're going to bring in some consultant assistants for sure. But there's some new state requirements that are coming into play that um make us need to do amendments to it. And given that it's like seventeen years old, it's ready for an update anyway and a refresh, so um. We're going to be taking that on. I think one of the issues we're going to take a look at is um ask the consultants for some assistance with is some. Some visual renderings and options for redevelopment and kind of looking at, you know, different scenarios that we might be considering. We're kind of taking the approach of the historic district is off limits. We're, we really, we've got good. Handbook that already addresses it and it's consistent with state and the Secretary of Interior guidelines. So we don't want to mess with the historic district, um but the rest of town, I think it's fair game for at least discussions about. How we want that to look in the future um and growth there, so. Anyway, more to come on that, so I think I'll probably schedule a work session with you guys sometime in the next couple months to kind of get you a little more up to speed on the comp plan. So, yeah, that's my update.
Mark, I refrain from saying anything tonight to Graham about sediment control. But um it, I think it's really important and I'd really like to see the town take a little more serious look. At controlling sediment coming off construction sites because the Clean Water Act is very clear. It doesn't say that you need to keep most of your sediment in. They want a hundred percent of the sediment contained. And what gets out, it's the responsibility of the contractor to hire people on the street with shovels and brooms to clean it up. Because otherwise it washes down the street, it gets in the river, it impacts the wildlife. The aquatic life and it's and it's a serious thing.
I agree, Mark. Um we have followed up with the contractor several times. I know they've done some cleaning up, but also that we.
You know, just as a comment, I drove through there this morning before the rainstorm and there was mud in the street.
Thank you.
So you know, I don't know whether that's that's Stan Miller or ultimately it's BGV's responsibility. But. I think the town really needs to take a hard line on it because where I come from, they'd shut your job down.
We'll follow up on it again.
Well, we'll uh have that as a topic of discussion at our agenda meeting on Thursday where we meet with engineering and streets. Because I I think it's got to be a multi-pronged enforcement um effort.
Thanks, Mark.
That's a valid point. Yeah, alright. Close her down, alright.
Quick thing, um there is a two day planning conference over in uh Grand Junction. If anyone's interested, um I think it's October twenty third and twenty fourth in Grand Junction, um state APA. Because they did not have a state conference this year because a national conference was held in Denver um in the spring. They are having a day and a half conference over in Grand Junction. If any planning commissioners are interested, let us know. We can get you information. They've extended the deadline for like another week or something like that, so um but it's a good chance to um get some training. So I'm going.
Okay. Mark? You know, with that, we'll bring the September sixteen twenty twenty five con- planning commission meeting to a close. So Chris, should I uh replace my hot dog?